Before we start today, I guess I'd like to address Brenda's concerns. You started your remarks off by saying we need to go back to the March meeting. This is the March meeting. Okay, so I didn't know how far back you wanted to go. Okay, so I can, I can tell you from eighteen years' experience, the city of Vienna will never consider going with the American Water Company, okay? And you would never want us to. The reason why the county commission is looking at that is because they are over all of the public service districts. So whatever they decide to do, that's on them. But American Water would never be an option for us. You, as a consumer, would hate it. The prices would be so much more than what you're paying now. They're a company and they make money. We're a utility and we serve the public. There's a big difference in those two right there. And so we're not being left out of the conversation. It's just that would never happen. Parkersburg would never go with American Water. We won't. It's just you lose absolutely every bit of control that you have as far as maintenance and any of the other things that go along with your water utility. So don't associate us in with that group of utility public service districts that the Wood County Commission is looking at, all right? Totally different set of circumstances, so.
Parkersburg was, Parkersburg was mentioned in it.
Yeah, but, well.
I just wanted to make sure that you had a toy.
We do have a choice. Yeah, because the county commission has nothing to do with us, all right? It's just one of those situations where, you know, in their case, it might work for them, but it won't for us. Am I speaking correctly, Mr. Metz?
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, they come here thirty years ago and tried to do the same thing and it was turned down at that time by the mayor and council. You know, the American Water has the highest rates in the state and they won't hesitate to apply them rates to here also. So like I said, it's a private company to make money. That's what they do.
They own a business, we're a utility, and there's a huge difference. But at any rate, okay? So let the record reflect that I've taken role that all members of the board are present. Having a quorum, we will proceed. The minutes from the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting have been printed, posted, and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? No objections in the minutes will stand approved as posted. We go to unfinished business this month. Craig, water quality testing?
Latest results come in from a testing C eight has come well below the limits that we're required to have, so.
Do you want, when do you want to talk about the new standards that have come out?
Let me discuss it now. I mean, it's fine. It's, I mean, another D E P come in at four parts per trillion. We're still below that, so it's, if four parts per trillion, you know, what everybody's been doing is, you know, and Parksburg's into it, got with the G A C filters. Ways less enough to have more, it's going to actually pay for our system, so. It's maintained itself. We had inspection last week from the EPA that come in and inspect our complex, which we'll talk about, and had no issue with it, so.
But they have sent that new notice out about the four parts per trillion.
Right.
And so we're still non-detectable. And I don't know how you all are looking at this thing, Steve, but as far as I'm aware, or Mike, as far as I'm aware, there's still no way to test for this.
The four, that's, that's what they made the limit is, four.
Yeah.
That's all you can test it.
Right, and so, I mean.
Either meat or you don't.
Right, and that's it. And so we're still non-detect, so we should be good for a long time. We do have the best carbon filter system, so it, you know, it removes lots of things other than C eight, so we're good. Any other questions on that? All right, so the next item is the A R P discussion. City has one point two million dollars left in our A R P funds. And that is after taking out the allocation for the pumps and for the forty-fifth place water line improvement. So we still have one point two million dollars left even after we pay for both of those projects. So the one point two million dollars has not been decided what to do with it yet. But that is where we stand with the A R P funds, all right? I mean, it seems like a lot of money, but it's not. Craig, could you spend a million dollars in the next ten minutes?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know you could.
Make good deposits on something.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, but anyway, we still have some A R P money left and we'll figure out what to do with that. The Twelfth Street Lift Station Pump Replacement update? Mike, you're in.
Yeah, I talked with him and they said, he, the guy was on vacation, but he said he couldn't remember either the end of A four, being a may, pump should be in. I think that's the only thing they're waiting on.
Questions?
No, I just thought the pumps are in. I thought they indicated pumps are into us. Maybe that's why I misunderstood them, but it's.
And it could be. He did, he was out. He just said everything should be in.
Yeah.
We're still up, we're still in good shape, we're still not?
Yeah, we're, we're pulling pumps out once a month, clean them up, make sure they maintain. You know, get them by until the new pump's going installed, so.
So what's the timeframe when you start to pull a pump or do you clean it?
Nah, we get pretty good at it. We can pull a pump, actually pull two pumps in a matter of four hours, so. We always try to keep one online, pull one pump on low flow conditions. We'll pull two, pull rags out, make sure not to get ate up too bad or any debris or anything like that and put it back in place. Our horse system, we pick it up, expose the impeller, hang it, we'll clean it up and actually put it right back in. Once a year, we still do an oil change and take a little longer because we have to vacuum that oil out and then replace it.
Any questions on the Twelfth Street Lift Station project? Okay. Burgess and Nyphle Water and Wastewater System Improvements Products Rate Discussions and Schedule and Project Discussion.
So I guess that's me?
That would be you.
Yeah, that would be me, okay. We did put together, based on discussions through the last meeting, a schedule and cost estimates for two, two-phase projects in both water and wastewater. We have sent that information into the accountants and they're working on potential rates based on the numbers we provided. I think we've only received one, Randy, have you received any more? Rule forty-two.
Price quote? Yeah, we've only received the one, the draft we received this past week, so.
And it's sewer.
It's, yeah, it's only the first phase of sewer, too.
Correct.
So I don't know if you want to go any into that any or wait till we get more information?
It, it got processed delayed. If you all want, I can have oil drop in, we drop oxygen in.
Okay. And the reason why we're not ready to talk about them today is Amy was on vacation today. And so she's been with Dixie over this. But there's another factor, too. You know, Senator Manchin does earmarks and we applied for an earmark to do this right here, okay? We should know very soon because the deadline passed. You had to have him in by last Sunday at midnight and they say that there's a quick turnaround on these. So we're waiting to hear whether or not that project gets picked by him. If it gets picked by him, that changes things drastically because, well, I shouldn't say drastically because you're dealing with the federal government, but it takes it off our plate and then it goes on their schedule because as soon as they would allocate that money, we would start to work. But getting money, I mean, it's a terrible process, okay? So I don't know how fast that they would allow us to do that, but because we submitted all of the documents that you prepared, that's all the other information that goes along with that thing, we're basically ready to go. If they would give us a green light on that thing, we would, we would step up our part of it. But how fast the government gives you the money and all that business, it's, it's never fast, never. But at any rate, if that would happen, that phase one would really take a load off of our budget. So we're waiting to see whether we get accepted or we don't. But that shouldn't take very long. Hopefully, my next meeting, we'll know. But at any rate, Amy will be back and then we'll get her in here and she can explain, you know, all the particulars on that as far as the numbers and what have you.
Sure.
All right. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, it's, it's interesting. We, we try to get ahead of these things, but these numbers are huge. This one's six point nine million dollars. You know, that's a huge number. And so anyway, we just do the best we can. You can't let these things continue down the road. They're not getting any better, all right? So we will wait till we get an answer from Senator Manchin's office and then we'll bring Amy in and she can explain all of Dixie's computations, okay? Any questions on that? All right. I'm sorry, I neglected earlier to go to item C, which was the five-year plan. Are there any additions or discussion points on the five-year plan? We've not added anything to it for a while, so it's been fairly stable. Craig, I don't know of anything that needs to be put on it as an addition.
Not addition, just, we're just keep bumping things back, you know?
Yeah, and I know that they, you know, they still all need to be fixed. It's not like they're going to go away, but we're making headway on some of them, so we will keep working on that. All right, so let's go on to the dredging of pond run and the dry dams.
Again, I haven't, it's there, project's ready, just need some funding for it. I know we still got feelers out looking for somebody to pay for it as the mansion or whoever, but hopefully, I have not heard anything from the Soil Conservation Department. I know they're working on grant money also. I've been trying to work with them on a mower also and I'm not getting a response, so we're doing the best we can on that project, so. Needs to be done.
So I reached out to Bob Buchanan, who is the head of the Soil Conservation, and he wrote us a fantastic letter of recommendation for this project. And then we did submit that entire packet to Manchin's office for that. It's interesting, and the reason why you haven't gotten any correspondence back, the two people that work out there that have been there forever are both retiring, okay? I mean, basically, you're going to start all over again. They have both been there for a long, long time and it's just, I mean, if they're not done by the end of this month, it'll be very soon after that. So I don't know where you go to the next level on this because they do control the money that we've contributed all these years and, you know, maybe we'll have to go back to Bob since he's the chairman and see if we can do something there, but that's why you haven't gotten any answers.
Well, I'd say Bob's been useful. I mean, he has been helpful for us, so. I don't mind speaking to him on reference to other things we're dealing with.
Yep. You know, if you want to reach out to Bob, just tell him, look, we've tried, we can't get an answer. He may be able to get you one, but when I spoke with the people out there the other day, it was like, you know, good luck, so. All right? But there again, I'm, you know, fairly optimistic about the funding for this one, so we'll see if it works or not.
I think it's a great project. I'm not sure why people aren't jumping on it, you know?
Well, and it's two different buckets of money. Either one of these projects, the front line comes out of one and this one here comes out of another one. So we're not competing against ourselves for either one of these. We could get lucky enough and get them both. I don't know. We'll see how it goes. Could, may not end up getting either one, but at least we've got a good chance. That letter of recommendation from Bob was outstanding, you know? So we'll see, see if they take it to heart.
I have a question here. I think that's great and hopefully we get the money, but if we don't, since this is a stormwater project and we, I think you said we have one point two million left in ARPA funds. In that, we can use the ARPA funds for the pond run?
Anything.
I mean, I, I just, just keep it on top of mind because I really think that pond run is, needs to be done and we've been talking about it for a long time and I understand you have to, you're at the government's discretion on whether you're not, you're going to get granted any funding, but, you know, what's plan B, in other words?
Okay. Burgess and Nyphle, Twenty-Eighth Street Storm Drainage Improvement Phase One, project update?
Yeah, we have put together the list of right-of-ways easements we need to acquire for the projects. There's about fifteen of them that I can give you the lists, thanks.
Phase one, Mike?
No, no, this is for the whole project. Phase one, we don't have any.
I was going to say, boy, I can't think of anybody there, okay?
Yeah. But really, it's just two main areas, you know, where we're going cross-country with, with a storm. The other, we have the two that we're looking to purchase, which are the two important ones. You know, I'm, I'm not as concerned about the easements, but the two areas we had identified what the actual treatment basin's in. It's important we go ahead and get those before something else would happen, you know, that would change the whole design.
Have you done the drawings on all these?
Yes.
So if Russ, if we were to start acquiring right-of-ways now, you can supply him with?
Yeah, I have a question for him, a couple, but other than that. Yeah, we're ready, ready to go and I've got drafts of phase one I need to talk to Craig about. And once they're ready, I think we're ready to go.
Well, if you'll get us the information on the right-of-ways.
Sure.
Make sure Russell looks at it. If there's anything you're missing, Russ, just let us know and we'll get whatever we have to.
They're not, Mike, you won't have them surveyed off of you. You just won't. And this is areas that we need.
Yeah, we will need survey for the ones we purchased. You know, you'll be, and one, it's not a full, one, we're purchasing the whole property, but the other one is a portion from the church, so. Yeah, we can get you that very shortly.
So once he gets them to me, I can turn them over to surveyors and get them surveyed up and I can get it for us.
Yeah, and who gets stuck getting the right-of-ways though, so, yeah.
Rap.
Yeah, that would be me, so.
Does a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
That rap guy's pretty good about that.
Yeah, he gets right on it, man.
Yeah. I got that one from Russ this past week and I had it signed in fifteen minutes, so.
Why did you send Russ that morning? You said, oh, it's signed, I'm like, wha?
Yeah, he's done. But there's a whole lot more on this page than that, so, anyway, whatever you can do would be great.
Great.
How soon on phase one would we be able to start?
A bit. Meet with Craig, as long as he's okay. I mean, even, there's not going to be a huge change. I mean, we would be ready. Where you guys want it to go.
You know, I, we'll see what your numbers turn out to be, what your estimate is and then, you know, I'll see what happens.
Sure.
Okay? Anything else on the Twenty-Eighth Street Storm Drainage? All right, so now we go to new business. This will be the approval of the bid financing for a two thousand twenty-three F four fifty truck for the Water and Sewer Department. Seal bids for the financing of a two thousand twenty-three F four fifty truck for the Water and Sewer Department were opened on February the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three at ten o'clock with the following results. United Bank gave us a three-year rate at four point eight percent for a total cost of one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents. United was the only bid that we received. So the bid proposal, recommendation for the utility board is the approval of the financing of the F four fifty truck from United Bank at four point eight percent. Funding for this project is budgeted in the Water Fund eighty-three ninety-two zero 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 and the Sewer Fund eighty-one three ninety-two zero 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 one. Craig, you want to talk about your truck?
Yeah, I just replaced some of our one-ton unit, which is, that's the one that has the floorboards rustled out. You can put your foot down through it. We got some stop signs on the floors to keep falling through it. Bed's in pretty bad shape and it's an old, just an older truck. It's been de-replaced a couple of years ago. We finally found a truck that we can, that they can produce and get it to us, so that's what the truck is, so.
All right. So any questions on, for Craig, on the F four fifty truck?
I would say that is a, it is a gasoline motor. Even have difficult times with diesel, so I expect a gasoline motor on this one. It's the Godzilla motor from Ford's. It's had the same horsepower and work rating as the diesel, but I don't have the diesel issues with EPA, so.
How long was our camera truck down with this?
Two months.
Two months. I just passed it, so you got it back yesterday and it's already out on the streets.
Two months, we had our camera truck out in the Middle East because of the diesel motor and a particular filter, which is a cleaning system on diesel fuel after it's been burnt, so. Just like everything else, it's been a short years and catalytic converters and diesel, and diesel particular filters and they had it for two months and, so. And they said it will happen again because we let that truck idle a lot, because that's what it does. It sets, this camera truck sets and idles, so. In four years, we'll probably be back doing the same thing as a twenty-eight hundred dollar repair, so. For our exhaust system.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the bid from United Bank in the four point eight zero in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we moved in second and we approved the bid for financing from United Bank. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the bid from United Bank, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay? Motion carried. Item number two, Burgess and Nyphle, Task Order for the two thousand twenty-three dash oh-seven Lead Service Line Inventory.
This is from the request in the discussions we had last month about basically being a second set of eyes for the city Greg's group as they go through and put together their inventory. So, you know, we, we will, like I said, just kind of look over his shoulder and make sure we're getting everything done correctly. We had come up with a fee of eighteen thousand dollars.
I know I asked you to do that. I still feel like it is a primary objective of ours in order to get through this lead and copper issue. For some reason, the state of West Virginia is becoming more difficult to deal with. I don't know whether they're losing key people in their record-keeping department, but every day there's some new challenge to deal with. Hopefully, if the board agrees that we engage you to make sure that we have completed all of the requirements, then we will save ourselves some headaches because eighteen thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, but if you get fined, you will pay way more than that. And I personally don't want fined and I'm, I don't want written up. I don't. We do a good job, our guys are excellent. And so because of some of the paperwork mess-ups that have come our way, it's, it's just, I don't know. I honestly think we need to do this in order to protect ourselves from anything that could come, fines, lawsuits, whatever, that it's a good, it's a good insurance policy for us. All right, Craig?
It's a, it's a big job, so any help would be appreciated.
Lori, you're the one that's getting all the fan letters. No fun, is it? Yeah. So anyway, any discussion on this? All right, and I'll, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of Task Order two twenty-three dash oh-seven, which is the Lead Service Line Inventory.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second and then we approve Task Order two twenty-three dash oh-seven. Is there any? Been moved in second and then we approve task order two twenty-three dash oh-seven. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
When we get done with all this, the documentation and all the things that you do for us, will this information be able to be transferred over to our GIS system so that we can build an inventory, if that's the right word, for any suspected locations or areas?
Yeah, that, that's kind of the final deliverable is the GIS.
Because we want to layer in there, so we'll know if we have any areas. I don't know of any way to do it without going to the courthouse and physically taking an inventory of every home that was built before, what, nineteen sixty?
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Nineteen eighty-eight. I mean, it'd be almost, I mean, I don't know how many homes are on Inverna, but there's a lot, forty-five-hundred would be close, but I mean, that's a lot. The only way I know to tell, unless Russ has a, do you have any idea how to tell when a house was built other than looking at the deed?
No.
Yeah, I don't think there is.
Sure.
Well, the other thing too, if there was an older house that was on the lot and they tore it down and built a new one, you still could be stuck with the old lines that were there, so. I don't know. Anyway, Mike, thank you, we're looking forward to that. Um, gosh, I hate to even do this one. Forty-fifth Place Water Main Replacement Bid. Seal bids for the Forty-Fifth Place Water Main Improvements were open on March the ninth, two thousand twenty-three at nine AM with the following results. Mountain House Properties bid four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Jimmy Harper Construction bid five hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. And DV Weber Construction bid three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five. After careful review of the bid proposals, the recommendation for utility board approval for the Forty-Fifth Place Water Main Improvement is DV Weber Construction for three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Funding for this project will be funded out of Water Fund eighty dash three forty-three dash zero 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 and will be paid for by a transfer in of ARPA funds. So, um, I know that there's a discrepancy or a difference between all three bids. I believe the estimate came down that the project should come in around five hundred thousand dollars and the DV Weber bid is three hundred and sixteen thousand, but we've had great experience with DV Weber. They did the Green, the Glenbrook uh, water project and they're a good company.
They are.
And so we, I mean, we don't have an answer unless you've spoken to them for a better answer, I don't have a better answer other than they may have had some of the materials on hand that they need to do this project, and that's why they bid it in so low, but they, they're a quality company and we've never had any issues with them, right Craig?
I have not, it's, it's been good to work with, actually. They did a waterline project for us off of fifty, third avenue off Fifty First Street and uh, Fifty Fifth Street, that area. They do storm drain up Greenmont, uh, any issues we had, we've called them, they've come back and fixed them, they've been real good work with.
Yeah, I have no issues at all with, with them, they're a good company. So, you know, that's a good thing for us that the bid came in as low as it did. Uh, the bad thing is they're not available for five years, so. Tony, hold on now, hold on now.
I didn't get a chance to talk to him. Did you get a chance to talk to him about start date, first start date?
No, I, I know that he said, he, he had called me before and said they're looking for work, so that was good to hear, so.
Yeah, so four years in, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I will say one thing, I mean, the bid's good, I mean, everybody bid good pricing per quantity, but uh, the quantity on the, on the concrete itself, uh, square yard, I mean, the gentleman bid ninety-eight dollars a square yard, which is a good price, uh, calculations cost about fourteen hundred square yards. I think there's a little bit, gonna be a little bit more than that in concrete, so we're just kind of figuring another fifty thousand dollars in this bid, um, the traditional concrete, because measuring it out in the field, I'm getting a little bit more than that, so no offense to Mike, but I mean, it's, uh, I think there's gonna be a little more than fourteen hundred square yards of concrete to replace, but he's still the cheapest on concrete, it's, I mean, he's bid ninety-eight dollars, everybody else one fifty, one sixty-two, so. Just be a quality update on that, so.
Generally, your expectations for change of work orders is as long as it stays within ten percent.
Yeah, it will, so.
Even with ten percent, our expected increase, still a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars lower than the next level.
Yeah, and it might, I, I could, I could be way out wrong, but uh, I just see additional price. Because we expect our replacement whole road, I don't like cuts, we did, we're gonna do the whole road. When I measured squarely off, I just got a little bit more cubic yards or cubic square yards, so. Just wanted you guys to know that, so, so, when I come back extra, a bit more money, you'll understand why, and I'll, I'll outline that when I do, if I don't have to.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a, a motion for the approval of the sealed bid from DV Weber Construction for three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second and, and we approved the low bid from DV Weber. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the bid from DV Weber Construction, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. I will try, if Russ gets us a resolution for next Thursday's council meeting, to go ahead and draw down the three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven fifty-five.
Three sixteen, seven fifty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we'll have that transferred over to the uh, Water Fund, and that way the money will be there when we need it.
Good.
All right, so. And as I spoke earlier, uh, this will be coming out of the uh, ARP funds and um, even with the three sixteen transfer, there's still one point two million left. So, and the three hundred and thirty-four thousand for the pumps has already been subtracted from that, and so that is a a one point two million dollar total left, all right? So. Last item under new businesses, the EPA National Compliance Initiative slash Safe Drinking Water Act Inspection, Inspection Discussion. Craig?
Yeah, that's a pretty big one. Uh, last week, like we discussed, we're using this table so clo- so tight because we, Lori and I and our water treatment operators sit down with inspectors from the EPA, uh, and Department of Health. We had inspectors from Philadelphia, and then they went to Park City the next day, so. Colorado, Wyoming, um, Wheeling. They sit down with us and then inspect our, our water system. The way we do things, uh, the way we keep records, um, inspections in the field, as the conditions are of our products and pumps, tanks. It was eight, nine hours that we got, spent quality time with them. They were some things that um, kind of briefly talked to us about what they see in the field, they're gonna do report, they have sending days due report, get to us, we have twelve days respond, that's where we get that, I'm not sure what a different time, but we work a lot quicker than they do, I guess, but uh, I want to go over a few things that they pointed out to us and, and discuss some things that we need to address, uh, nothing really major, um, as a quality, but one thing is the hydrant flushing, they had issues because we do not charge the fire department for water when they do flushing or filling up their fire trucks if I can, they want us to install meters because it, it reflects on our water loss ratio, we're setting at six percent. They wanted to get that number down a little bit and keeping track of what they use, and when we flush hydrants or do a little testing, fire department, they want us to start addressing that issue and keep better records of it, and that all comes in what they call an SOP. That's sustained operating procedures, and they kind of talked about a few of the SOPs that we should be doing. First of that, and some, our skated system and some stuff down at our wellfields, actually, how generators should have, and which I never had a here big supporter of, it should just show a chart on the wall, all these procedures, how to do each step-by-step if you get in this situation. Not a big deal, we can have it done, so. Again, um, they dinged this one, vacuum breakers, uh, we had garden hose hooked up that things didn't have vacuum brakes on it, so we went out and bought sixteen vacuum brakes and put them on, they're six dollars a piece, so that should take care of that. Uh, labeled lines, injection lines like chlorine for light, um, lines, we didn't have them clearly labeled. Probably made, we're making them up, we're putting, if I'm on line, it'll be good. So these are little Meyer things, which is good. But I will say, uh, well, one thing is, our tanks are, we replaced the tanks less than ten years ago and, and they dinged this one because the screens, overflow screens are too big, um, I couldn't stick that pencil in that screen, but that's too big for them, they went down to twenty-four grids per inch, which is like a screen on a house, so. No big deal, you probably got dinged for it too down Parksburg, but that, because it's, the screens are very small, we have on there, MET compliant when we installed it. Now they don't, it's just some things that change, uh, so we'll address that, we'll put new screens on them. Uh, drawings of like mapping the wells fields seven through fourteen, which we have, I will get that to them. All these things will, time they get the, the letter out to us saying this is what you need to correct, they're always be done. But there's a few things in here I need to talk to you all about, um. And I called Mike and the biggest thing is our skated system, our skated system operates our wellfield, our tanks go down low in water, the well and the skated system tells the pumps, turn on pump, tanks back up, okay? Our current skated system was probably the best there was five years ago. But the individual was, had passed away that did the skated system and the company transferred to another individual, he had about a year and he closed up shop, so there is no backup for our skated system. It works well. But they want to see, they asked for the records of any issues we've had in that program for the last five years, that means if we had a call out, say one of our pump failures, it dials the guys out twenty-four seven, we'll go and address that issue, uh. Our record-keeping was for twenty-four hours, and that's why it's always built in there, they don't like that. Um, so, I talked to Mike, it, we're due for new skated systems, so that one point two million dollars you guys keep referring to, I'm gonna chew into that a little bit.
Sorry, it's all gone.
Yeah, so I'm gonna need a new skated system for our water and our sewer system, so.
You know that new truck you wanted? Thank you.
You told, I said I could get it, so, yeah, so, I want to ban that one. Mike's gonna bring some individuals out of Cincinnati next Thursday, I'm gonna meet at ten AM, go over our system, I'm gonna try to get um, try to look at a system that's compliant with ours, meets ours, stuff that's already in the field, so I don't have to buy everything new, uh, but I'm sure it's gonna be pretty expensive, uh. Once we get down that, 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 that'll meet their issues that they had with that. Uh, and we need a new one anyway, because if it goes down, we're, we don't have nobody to repair it or fix it or work on or anything. Besides Tommy, but, and Tommy can do some of the computer stuff, but he can't do the dac flex on it, so. They had a backside warehouse thirteen fourteen, had some rosin issues, had some pit and dirt in, very minor stuff, which is great, okay? But they sit here with us for four hours and went over in this room, went over every documentation that we had, everything that they asked us, that they needed to see proof of what we'd done, we had, okay? They even tried to trick us, tried to trick Lori and ask, uh, we were supposed to send something in to them, like probably just a signature saying that, hey, yes, we have one. We sent it in, they want to see proof of it, so Lori showed them proof of it, and then the guy says, well, I want to see the document, the whole document, which is a stack of, you know, procedures. Before he went and got it, the guy said, he said, he laughed, he said, yeah, every place we've gone to, we've asked for us and nobody could produce it. And they indicated to us that our record-keeping was outstanding. And I give an attagirl to Lori, I hate to do this, okay, I give a heck, but I tell you, the girl really had everything at their fingertips when they asked it, and you, you talk about Mike bringing in for lead and copper, which, you know, I appreciate, but it was nice to have everything, so, yeah, so give the girl an attagirl or wherever you want with her, but. So, but uh, it was, it was nice, and they was, they was very impressed. Um, like I said, they think this for such little stuff out in the field, screens, you know, a lock that was rusty, I mean, really, it's uh, I can fix them kind of things. We've got a new lock, that, that issue's fixed, so, um, I think they was impressed, they appreciate, they, all their inspectors told us they appreciate our honesty, which we don't try to hide anything, here it is. Um, this, and they also said it was one of the nicest places they've come to, so. Been good.
Let's just, let's just ask your honest opinion, okay? Do you think that you're going to get ahead of all this reporting that's being required through the sampling that we have?
Are you gonna get ahead of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, yeah.
No, the answer is no, you're not. We've been fighting this for months.
Oh, oh, you're not relinquishing command of it?
They, they, they did go over our operating procedures, lead and sample, lead and copper samples that we've taken, and I had Joe come in, we brought our skated system, not skated system, our GIS software, and we showed them all the locations that we tested, all locations that we've sent out, the questionnaires people, where it was on the map, and it clearly showed it, and uh, it was, they, I think they was really impressed with that, and our work order programs that we send out, uh, they just said that we need to keep just a little bit better records of uh, when the guys get called out, the girl out front, the lady out front, Sarah, she'll get a call from somebody and she'll, so she'll go out to work on, on her computer and send it out to my crews, and the guys go out and address the issue, but sometimes they don't always fill out it's completed. And that's on the issue they really had, they just want to see and make sure everything was completed in it, and, but that's, I talked to the guys about that, and we're gonna start, they're gonna hit that little button and say, yeah, we did complete it, so. They was, they really liked our, our GIS software, yeah, yeah, it was. We done good, we done good, Tommy done great, so, um, yeah, so, but little thing, skated system's gonna be a big price tag, just let you guys know, we have to have it, that's, does operate our system. Security-wise.
Steve, I know it's very familiar with skated systems, but if you've never seen the skated system, it's like sitting in the cockpit of a rocket ship. I mean, you literally can control levels, valves, I mean, it, it manipulates the entire system remotely, and it's something you have to have. But Mike, when any people from Cincinnati come in, are these the people that actually make the system, or what, what are these people gonna, gonna show us?
We're gonna go and see what, all we need and they come up with, you know, what's gonna be able to be maintained locally and make sure that meets what Craig wants as far as, because I know, I don't know how many places you're looking, it's several, right?
Yeah.
It's not just wellfields.
Yeah, and to be honest, we don't have, we currently do not have a skated system in our service system. So when I ask them to come in, I'm gonna ask them to go ahead and do it for our service system also, so be in the same type of program, same computer. Okay, we don't have any controls, remote controls for our service system, and I'd like to keep that on reference of our little stations, how much time they run, any issues, and like, I use this to visual inspection.
Have you got a snowplow or anything we can trade on that? I mean, we took your truck already, is there any snowplow or anything?
Uh, I think Lori's paying.
We just backed it up a minute ago, wow, man, he told you you were the best.
That was, that's, that's good, good question, man.
Yeah, I mean, uh, obviously it needs to happen, but what's a ballpark, I mean, the baseline price or something like that?
The number they told me was two hundred thousand dollars, okay?
Well, because I mean, you know, I've already kind of laid a breadcrumb what I'm thinking about that one point two, so I'm seeing what you're gonna thomp away.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna, it's not a cheap product, but it's, we've, uh, last system we've had, we've had for thirty-five years.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, it's something, product's gonna last.
Oh, yeah.
So, and something that's needed, definitely in sewer, definitely in the water, and that's another issue reference, going back to skates, no- Thing that they dinged us on was our meters in the wellhouses, uh. We have, currently have flow meters in the wellhouses, keep track of our flow going out. With the Neptune issue with our meters, that it was, that was part of that, is we're replacing meters. And tying back into our billing software, so I could say, see what being pumped out compared to what we sell per day, keep our track of our water loss. They haven't been working for a while, okay, we've been using meters that are, uh, that, um, more installed in our GAC filters. It's done the water loss off, uh, so they said I need to replace some meters, which I explained to them. About the issue we're having Neptune, they understood that, but they said they're gonna have to put in a report that it needs to be replaced, so.
So the, the flow meters that they want us to put on the fire hydrants to determine how much water usage is going out, how expensive are they?
That's just two and four inch meters we have, so.
So you're gonna have to install a two or a four inch meter on every time you change, every time you, uh. Flush a fire hydrant.
Yes.
And then why would we build a fire department for that?
Cause they use water, they use water in their, fill their tanks up.
What does that have to do with flushing?
Water loss for us.
So you're saying we just need to account for the water that goes in the fire trucks? Yeah, well, okay. That's fine. So I know, uh, last meeting, we had a discussion about the Neptune meter situation and Mr. Scott said, wrote them a letter. Where are we at with that?
Tommy, they give you a call, what'd they respond to you with? He told me, I'll let him explain it, but.
Harry Johnson from. Chief Supply who's our. And the. We'll check questions number of years.
So how much time are we gonna allow before we get a response?
I don't know what else I can do.
Well, we'll stick the hammer after him again.
Definitely, I think a reasonable amount of time to calculate that, probably thirty, how long's it been since you've gotten a response? I'd give him another couple weeks, thirty days is at least.
I mean, if we have to sue these people, you know it won't be resolved for a while, we don't wanna get into that timeframe.
We don't wanna go into the details of whether or not we're going to do any litigation at this point, we wanna see if we have, if we have an issue. And allow them to have the opportunity to resolve the issue.
Yes, that would be, that'd be great.
And then we'll take either board, I'm sure, given the option, they'll take whatever appropriate steps are necessary, necessary to protect. The continuity of this service.
Did you write all that down for the minutes? Genius, continuity of the, and all that business?
I think it's what it's trying to say is they're gonna try to start working with us much better than what they have in the past.
It sounds that way, doesn't it?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Once we get that set, what we're gonna do, reference changing things around, then again, I'll get the new flow meters installed at the wellhouses. It'll be three, six inch meters, what it'll end up being.
Three six inch meters, you said?
Yeah, that's actually, we call them plants, plant one, two, and three, but that's the outflow is six inch and that. I put on outflow, it doesn't matter what pumps are running or how many pumps are running, I'll just catch that flow when it's outfall of that facility. Now, keep better track, like I said, our loss is low anyway, but, um, I could, I'll keep a little better track for it and keeping records of it for them.
Did they give you any, any indication when we would get the final report?
Seventy days. Seventy days.
Seventy days?
Ninety days, so.
Ninety days, wow.
I thought seventy.
I have a dumb guy, non-lawyer question, just on my career. You can answer it if you want, but how do you measure the outflow from flushing, how do you measure hydrants when you're flushing?
A meter on it?
You just literally put a meter.
We have large meters that adapts to the outflow of the hydrant.
I mean, it makes sense, I would assume there was an answer for it, I just.
I mean, we could do it by calculation, we could say, we know this hydrant flowed seventy hundred gallons and then we run it for a minute, that's what we'll do. They want a little bit more accurate of that.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Trying to account for where all your water goes, that's, that's a reasonable. Oh, I know, manpower wise, it's every. Doing all that, it'll slow down the flushing. How many, how many hydrants do we have?
What she asked us, what did we tell them? I forget what number it was.
It's a lot.
Dave said it, cause he kept record of it, so, yeah, quite a few. We don't flush everyone, we flush zones, okay? Me, first three hydrants on this line, we're just gonna flush one hydrant.
Any other questions on the inspection? All right, managers report.
We're, next week, let y'all know, we're gonna place a, uh, a water line six inch main that went through, uh, beside Lee's house, it's. Broke a couple of times and has, uh, gotten some water in her basement when it's broke. It's an old trans side line, we're gonna place about a hundred and twenty feet of the main line, uh, put a new valve on it, so it's on Conley Drive.
Conley.
Conley Drive, yeah.
Colony.
Colony Drive, I know, I, I always say Conley Drive.
Between fifty-first and fifty-fifth.
Off River Road, that's why, I never do, I can never get that right, I don't know why. Yeah, so we're gonna replace that starting Tuesday, you know? And Wednesday, we'll shut the water down, tie it in, get flushed out. Seems like this week or last couple of weeks, we've had issues with meter placements, people's had water leaks, there's one out on. Rosemont Road, it comes off a different line, like I said, new meter, uh, run down, uh, tie it back to the existing line, its service line. The meters was not placed on the property line, it was placed on somebody else's and that line breaks in there, so. I gotta replace that, get it in the proper location. Same thing happened to us on, off Sixteenth Avenue and Forest Hills Drive, uh, meters placed on Sixteenth Avenue. They had issues with the water break, uh, we, we already did, we, uh, replaced. Saw new tab, the new meter in on the edges of their property and they had, they'll run a line to it, tied in, so. This people was out of water a little bit, cause their service line leaked, we went in and fixed their service line. It's in a real bad area, uh, crosses some different properties, extended service line, it really shouldn't have been there, but. It's legal, yes, but we tried to do it the proper way and that's why we moved it, so, got that job done today, so. Spoke to Lade Day, I think she's, has hired a contractor and they're gonna start on their, placing their service line next week. That'll be completed, so. Did the storm drain project over the park, uh, had some, some erosion issues, the storm, the waters come down the hill. One, there's an old twelve inch corrugated metal pipe that ran through the field, it was plugged up and damaged, uh. So it was filling up, jumping over and flushing out through the parking lot. We installed new, uh, pipe, tied it into, crossed it over, tied to existing pipe, replaced a twenty-four inch up the. Pahla and, um, where the project is going on for the filter and we're moving this rock and stuff, so. Hopefully get it seed and straw next week, uh, talked to Mr. Harper about possibly hydro seeding, Spencer's laning. Uh, I know we've got some water spots down there, but they're not bad, um. But the grass didn't, we got so late planting grass last year, it didn't grow, then the geese come in and. Stayed and, you know, had their feast for a month and ate up a lot of my grass seeds, so we're gonna try to get that reseeded here next month. In-house, uh, either we're hydro seed or new, we'll throw out some more hay and more seed and fill in the little water holes and take care of that, so. Still working on lead and copper stuff, um, that's an ongoing thing, still writing new programs, Joe's been writing new programs, GIS software. Uh, correcting some issues that we've had, improvement program every day. Still down two employees, so. Seems like we bring up people in interview, don't work out, don't wanna work here, don't wanna take the pay cut, a lot of issues, uh. So if you know a couple of guys or a couple of people, I should say guys, a couple of people. Those guys don't matter, so they all work the same. Down, or we're sure down one pickup truck, it lost the transmission, the motor uses three quarts of oil about a week, uh. Wanted to replace that truck, I've been looking at either truck or maybe possibly a little panel van, I think Parksburg has one. Uh, you'll see, if you see like grogs running around, the little panel vans that have. Try to get one of them, see, I'm trying to get prices on one, see what they're, are and availability of them, try to get the guys back on the field. We are using a reserve truck, we wanted to put in the auction, but we're back out of the auction, so they could use it while that truck's down, so. I could replace the motor and transmission in that truck, but it, it is due to be replaced anyway, timeframe's up and it does have a hundred thousand miles on it. I'd just rather just replace the whole vehicle and sell the pickup. Fixing a lot of equipment for all the rest of departments, mechanic is, we did lose one mechanic. Last week, he had a, he didn't fall at work, but he had injuries, so, uh, he's gonna be off for eight weeks, which hurts us a lot. Accidents do happen, so. Wasn't at work, but that's just another employee down, so. That's about it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This goes back to stormwater, um. Whenever the planning commission meeting was a couple of weeks ago. And there was discussion about the new car wash that's gonna be down at the mall.
Correct.
And during that meeting, you expressed some concerns because it parallels right up to Ponrun, being able to have access. You will not have access to be able to clean that out like you normally would, if there's some reason you need to get in there. So what's the plan with, with how they're gonna maintain it, is there anything formal?
I spoke to him yesterday, uh, on the phone, had a conference call with them and their engineers, uh, there's a couple of questions about that, one was. Maintaining stormwater, our stormwater channel, it's Ponrun, uh, they are gonna write it up saying that they're gonna be responsible. Right up to their maintenance contract with their maintenance people, that they are gonna be responsible, mow that, that's, I can't do it anymore, uh, with our flomar. So that, they'll get it in writing and, uh, also reference the issues they had with, um, the private lines at the mall complex, they're gonna address them and. Flood plane issues, uh, ask for lomar, so they're gonna start working on it and get it. And I asked for some grade points so I can check their finished floor, it's just completed, so that's being done.
Okay, yeah, cause I mean, I was looking at their landscaping and I know it's just, you know, a concept or whatever, they. I was thinking, well, gosh, how's anybody gonna get in there and do it, so.
Yeah.
You know, I just wanna make sure, you give something you're comfortable with and no issues then.
Yeah, I mean, I asked him, I told him that they'd be responsible for mowing it, so if I couldn't do it anymore. They'll just have to get guys up in weed eaters and mow that bank, I mean, they're raising the elevation up eight feet on three one slope. You know, where we used to go through with the tractor, plank, uh, excavator, flomar inside, mow the banks, we won't be able to do that, I won't reach that far. So, but they're writing in their contract, they're gonna maintain it, so.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
Then where's that car wash gonna be built?
Well, he could probably give you a better description, it's, it's right there near the big lots.
Yeah, right in front of the big lots on, uh, same side of the stream as Cadobas.
Yes.
That vacant field right there.
Okay.
So you could access it on that main entrance off of Grand Central.
It is not the same company that has the one up by United Bank. It's a different company.
It's called.
Yeah.
Ultimate Shine Car Wash.
So I, I'd like to tell Craig in front of the board, um, how impressed I am with the crew, okay? Craig made reference to that water break that was on Sixteenth Avenue. Sixteenth Avenue is at the very top of Twenty-third Street, when you go straight up the hill and you have to make that ninety degree turn to the left, okay? So with like every other town, when various parts of the town are built, depending on who the builder is and how they do things, that's how they stick it in there. All right, and so when that particular house was built, they brought that water line right straight out of the house. Down over the hill towards Sixteenth Avenue. Over the years, it was fine, but now that it's got issues with it, one of the neighbors that was there built a fence. And so now there's a fence that blocks that entire area coming over the hill. And so Craig's guys, and I don't, I don't know how cold it was that day, but it was cold, I mean, it was in the twenties. Oh, rainy, it was a terrible day, but it was a Thursday, I believe. Yeah, it's a Thursday, okay, Craig didn't wanna let these people go without water for the whole weekend. And so the guys came out and they hand dug that water line. Eight feet deep, freezing cold rain, and they dug that water line back, I don't know, thirty, forty feet probably. Until they found the coupling that was bad, made the repair on that coupling. And then this week, you know, they've obviously made arrangements to get that new water line put in, but I'm telling you. Whatever we paid those guys that day wasn't enough, I mean, it was bad, you know, and they got it done in one day. You know, but it was, is a terrible, terrible location.
And that lady, she could not find a plumber, I mean, she could not find anybody to do the line, uh, they wouldn't dig it up. They wouldn't take their equipment on it, so.
Well, I did communicate with that property owner and just to sing your praises, she was singing your praises and your crew, so, you know, definitely was very appreciative. She was very appreciative of the work you did.
I wasn't out there.
Gosh, I can't believe that.
You're the boss, take it back.
I was out there.
Yeah.
You know, only cause Craig told me. Anyway, good job, I mean, you know, we have that discussion all the time, people don't realize how, how bad that job is at times. All right. Anything for you today, Joe?
Just to say, good job on the record keeping. Very good, that, that's very good to hear. It was really impressive, I wish they could film it, because everything, everything they tried to trick us on, Lori just like bam, 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 and there's like. Eyes opened up, it's like, you actually keep breaking, I'm like, yeah, we, we got that, so.
Now you see that big smile right there, Joe? I'm gonna call you the next time I get one of them nasty grams. Cause as soon as I call Lori, it's like, oh, what now? Yeah, yeah.
Just to go with what Joe just said, thank you, because I learned a lot about that today, what, everything you went over and it was very helpful. And just personally, to have a sense of, this is a tight ship being run here and I appreciate that.
Try.
Does do a great job.
Yeah, guys, Department Health, give me heck about these, didn't he? He, he was thirsty, I said, give him a bottle of water and he said, I don't drink that water, so, he said, I wanna know your tat.
Oh.
He said, I don't drink out plastic bottles, I said, oh, okay, so I gave him, he said, this is good. Yeah, yeah, he says, good taste water, I was like, okay. So we ordered a machine that actually puts out bottles, meaning like metal bottles now, so. Our water cooler is bad in the hallway, so we ordered a new machine, you can actually fill cups up. You know, it's, which is nice for us too, cause we drink a lot of water here and we can fill our cups up also, so.
So we're gonna have to put a meter on that water pump?
It already is, it's a meter.
Russell, anything for you today? Lori, all right, thank you all for coming today, meeting adjourned.